Welcome to the March 16, 2023 regular meeting of the Town and Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Michael O'Reilly, Chairman. If you will, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free, just, and strong.
Okay, thank you. People call the role starting on my right.
Dominic Scarglino, alternate.
Dominic Benicio, alternate.
Brian Todd.
Ambrosi Commissioner.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Nicole Lebo, alternate Commissioner.
Cheryl Valerie Staff.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Thank you. At this point, we'll open the meeting to general public participation. So that is the time for any members of the public, either here or online, that would like to address the Commission on any issues that are not on the agenda. So these are anything that you'd like to talk about, bring to our attention, but nothing that is on the agenda, because those will be spoken about when they come up or already closed. So if there are anybody, if there is anyone, please raise your hand. Anyone like to speak to the Commission? Raise your hand. I don't see any online or in person, in which case then we'll go to our first public and only public plan. That is SEP 2023-03, file 1651A. That is 127 Main Street. This is continued from 3/2/23. Rick, you have exhibit?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, exhibit number six, response to comments by Solly Engineering. Exhibit number seven, letter from Concerned Navy. Chairman.
Do we have anyone from the applicant here online tonight? Anyone online or here for the applicant? If not, then we'll go to the public participation period for this application. Now, this is for 127 Main Street, which is the multifamily often complex, always known as Pond. So anyone here tonight that would like to address the Commission on this application? Or anyone have any other issues on this application? So when you come up to the mic, the phone, just speak into the microphone, give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Genji Dorchensky. I reside at 17 Laurel Drive, Monroe, Connecticut. I have lived in Monroe since 41, 41 years now. I love the town. And since 2004, we've been enduring a lot of problems at that property, blasting, different The last company came and put a seismograph into my yard because I was just petrified each time it happened, even though they called me and told me that it was going to happen. My dog almost had a heart attack each time because the dog hears more than I do, especially in the winter when my doors are shut when they're going to blast. Half of the time, we didn't even hear the whistle that they're going to do it. I didn't get the email, but I didn't have the call. But, you know, it's this latest company, they've lasted every single day for the last two months, every single day. Now, I work from home. I work for United Healthcare. I have an office right in front of the house. And, you know, it's, it's just, and now we just heard that you're going to put in 196 apartments in that little place where is across the street from Route 25, they're putting in 96, and that's a much bigger and open space? I mean, I don't, I just can't even comprehend how that's going to be. Is it going to go up high? Is it, I mean, 196 people come and go, the traffic as it is right now is horrendous. You know, and if I try to use places in Monroe and purchase things in Monroe, like if I want to go to the fish market, I have to make a left from Preston. People run around on Preston thinking they're going to cut off the traffic on 25. You know, the noise level, you know, they've been working and I get that. And I, I believe in developing things, but 190? That's excessive. That's a lot of people, a lot of places, a lot of digging, a lot of noise. I mean, I've been here, like I said to you, 41 years, I love this town, but I don't know if I want to stay anymore. It's pretty sad. So, you know, I just wanted to voice my opinion. It's really, really getting tiring of the blasting. I mean, even though the past two weeks they haven't, I mean, how much money does this company gonna make on stones? They're probably making millions of dollars on that alone, and now they want to put this huge development in there?
I believe they're almost finished with the blasting.
Right, Rick, how much more?
Yeah, they anticipate by the end of May.
Any more yards?
I don't know how many times I've heard that. It's been years. Oh, we're done.
Huh? Under 20,000.
Under 20,000. It should be done by May, man. Well, I'm just saying.
And, you know, I've lived there for 20 some odd years at that property, and I've heard that all the time, oh, we're going to be finished by December, we're going to be finished by February. No. If anything, it got worse. Every single day they blasted, every single day for like months. So we're pretty much set up in that neighborhood. It's a beautiful, quiet neighborhood, supposedly, you know, but it's not going to be if they're going to put in this huge complex with fire pits and swimming pool and the noise level, the lights. I mean, I happen to be up on top of the mountain, so to speak. I'm up on the hill. And I'm thinking, well, what is it going to be? They're going to build it up like this? And are we going to see lights and noise and craziness? I mean, it wasn't like that when I moved into the, you know, beautiful home. It still is a beautiful home, and I don't want to leave, even though I should, but I don't want to. But it's, it's really getting to be a lot to endure. So I just wanted to say, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments.
Really, it's just, you know, and I welcome people to come over, stay with me. I mean, it was at one point, I, I'm not sure if this is the same company that's blasting, but they used to blast once a week only. And when the person came with the seismograph, he would literally sit with me in the, in my office because I'd be like, oh my God, oh my God, you know, huge. And he, he would sit there with me. And one time, a picture fell off the wall. I mean, I don't know what it's doing to my foundation. I don't know what it's doing to my well, but I don't think anybody really cares. Tell you the now time is true. So it's, it's, it's a lot. I'm sorry again, but that's just how I feel. It feels like it's years and years and years, and it keeps going and going and going, and it's getting worse by the minute. I don't, I don't mind if they put in apartments, but 190?
We just imagine if they tighten things up, we're not going to let it go on forever.
Yeah.
If it's the summer, come, come, come back in.
We don't have the gods ears because I keep hearing that, oh, we're going to be done in six months, we're going to be done in a year. You know, and now when I take a walk and I go by Sally's house and I look, it's a huge gaping hole. Like, how much more can you get out of that place? It's not a huge space, you know? So, you know, I'm not an architect or anything, but I don't know.
When the, when the plant, when the blasting plan was brought to us, okay, they only have a certain amount of yards that they can take out of there. They can't go any more than that. And we have records that come into the town hall to make sure that at that point, and at that point, it's the end. In accord to our town planner, they only have like another 20,000 yards to pull out of there. And so that's not, not tremendous a lot, what they took out of there. So I'm just letting you know that they can't go any further than, because we have to get reports.
Because I'm thinking dollar signs, okay, that's important. You know, Monroe wants to grow. I'm for definitely growing, but this is a little bit excessive, I feel. Yeah, 190. And I can't even imagine the traffic, to tell you the now time is true. And I get my nails done on Preston Place, not that important, but I have to make that left. And sometimes I sit there five minutes, ten minutes. Sometimes I have to take a right as opposed to going left and find my way around to turn around and go, you know, to the right, to the left rather. You know, I go right and then I, and with this much traffic coming in? I don't know. I mean, Route 25 is not big. It's very, very small. Very small. I don't know. I'm just, you know, sorry about that.
I agree.
Do we have any other members of the public here tonight that would like to come up and make statements? If there are, just raise your hand.
Hey.
Just come to the microphone, to the microphone and just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is William Garvey. My address is 140 Old Newtown Road. And every morning I get up and I go out to Main Street where that's where I'm going, my destination. And I have to say that I have to stop at that light three times and watch it turn colors, red, green, red, green, at least three times before I could even get up to Main Street. And then I could end up in the middle of the road, which I have many times, much to the chagrin of other people. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And yes, come right up. Just name and address, please.
My name is Sally Longy. I'm with Route 35 on Fox Lane. And I'm up behind. I have questions and some observations. My first question is, because I'm a little confused about this, who is the owner title of this property now?
Well, why don't you go ahead with all of your questions?
All right, okay.
We'll see at the end.
I just, I'm just a little bit confused and I hear different people are saying different things, so I think it'd be nice to resolve what that is. In terms of the traffic, I don't think I need to say a whole lot because everybody's saying, we know traffic is an issue. I just have one suggestion that relates to what this gentleman has said. Because I tend to sometimes be on 111 coming back at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon. And it would just seem, and it's always one person, the first person in line can turn real fast and turn left, and then it's a solid line. Could there be a way that the DOT could put a left turn signal there? Because there's no left turn signal when you're coming down Old Town Road to, to Old Newtown Road to the traffic light at 25. There's a left signal on the other side on Judd Road, but you just have to manage when you can make a quick turn and the traffic gets back way up on Newtown Road. So I would just make that suggestion. It seems easy enough to just put a left turn signal there. In terms of the school system, I've had experience working with my kids' burn school with a volunteer or that I cannot believe that there are only going to be 18 students in the school system of this size of a complex. It just doesn't make any sense. You're under 97 apartments and there are only going to be 18 children. It's, there's, I, if the developer were here, I really would like to ask the question, where did this information, where do they get that information? What, where does it come from? The other question I have is, what is the date of the information from DOT and the Department of Environmental Protection? They've given information related to the traffic patterns and how much traffic and all that. But when was that report done? When was the report done from Department of Environmental Protection? The, they just, another, the Health Department? These are important information, but if it's not recent, it's not too valid. Main thing is what Genji just said. This seems like, I'm not against development. I understand that these people have a right to propose whatever they want to propose. God bless all of you. A big job to decide what development is right, but, but it just seems that when you look at the size of Monroe, you're having 917 apartments, you're increasing proportionally the size of this town by over 1,000 people. And they're all in this one place. And you, and I've looked online at the development by this company and trumble. And it's, it's huge. And it's wonderful to have all these amenities, but they're going to be crammed into this 20-acre property surrounded by other properties. And I've been in my house for over 30 years. I love the neighborhood. And look at someone like Genji, she's the second owner of her house. We have a very stable neighborhood where people have lived in their homes for a long time. Now we have new, young people coming in and we welcome them, and it's wonderful to have babies and, you know, we, our biggest investment is our homes. And we put a lot into it, and we have a lot of memories in our home. And I would like to ask all of you, if you haven't had a chance to, please keep this, keep the, this hearing open and do a sidewalk. I don't know how any of you have been up to the neighborhood above, you know, if you've walked the property, first of all. And secondly, if you've walked Preston Place, up Preston Place to where the lady who was here the last time, Mrs. Wickland, they, there's property there that are butts of property. There's no buffer there. And Laurel Drive, Little Fox, my neighbor across the street, I'm fortunate, I'm on the opposite side. I don't, I can at least go and look at my backyard and be on my deck, and I don't have to look over this mess. But the people who are on the opposite side of the street, they have, they have a mound of dirt in their yard. And they're constantly having dirt, dust, whatever, they go, fortunate they have a swimming pool, but it's, so I guess I, if you haven't done the sidewalk, I really wish, wish you would. Maybe do two things, maybe do a sidewalk of our neighborhood that surrounds this property. And secondly, visit one of the properties that's developed by the company that's proposing this, making this proposal. Just, and you have kind of a sense of what, what the capacity of the 20 acres it's there has for this kind of development and how it's going to affect Monroe. Because the point is, investment is only investment if it, if it brings people here to, to provide the taxes that Monroe's looking for. So if, if it's not sensible, it's not going to go. So I just think if you just, if the blasting's done, the blasting's done. But just try to slowly figure out what is the best use of this and how the property can fit the development in a sensible way. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. So I can tell you, the studies were done recently, once you asked for, since the application's been before us.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious what.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public here tonight that would like to speak? Come on up front, please, and just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rick Smith, Route 61 Hill Chris Road. You know, poppy of that project, with regard to that project, I sent a letter outlining some issues that I had. Really what it comes down to is, I believe it's too dense. I'm sorry that, I don't want to extend this meeting, but I, public really relies on you to make good decisions and have the foresight to allow good planning. We're talking about the worst intersection in town. So I'm a systems engineer and I decided about some, to take some observations. And I found out, as has been recounted, that there are numerous cycles. The traffic has backed up, 20 plus cars on 25 and 10 on the feeder. I took a good look at things and, and I can't, and I don't want to mention specific data, but the data says that we've got real problems right now. It's rated F and it's not going to get any better. This, these, these people, the problem is, the apartment is going to have traffic that mimics the peak. Peak of the apartment is a peak of the road. One, people are going to go in and out trying to, trying to get into the apartment to work there or to, to leave, to go to their jobs in the evening, same kind of thing. It's peak to peak. But the one point that I, that I saw that I, that really bothers me, and I want you to take it real seriously, is the high number of traffic infractions that are evident. I said, I was out there in, in peak hour, just one afternoon, so it's not statistically significant, but I saw it not just the regular, of running of yellows and other things, but just traffic infractions. No left on red is clear, but people do it on a regular basis because they don't want to leave. And people are, you know, they want to get to work, they want to get home. They don't want to mess with people. And, and it's just tense, it's a very tense situation. I know because I drove there with Sikorski back and forth every day for many years. But like I said, high traffic infractions, running lights, speeding, lane block, crossing lanes, cell usage, no left on red, ignoring, just, I guess it's an option. The lights are optional? I, I don't know. It's just, it's amazing. And there are a lot, too many of those calls. I just caution you, it's not the right density. I understand we already, we could put a shopping center in or other things, it might have, might alleviate it not as much, but this traffic study is not as comprehensive when compared to others. Specifically, right down the road, Gateway Commons, Hardusky and Steve Sapola did it, then Hanover and Hardus, I don't know. There's a firm in New Haven that did the traffic study there. They included the half a mile of this, to include this traffic light as well as the half a mile back to the connector to Henry Mucci. So they did a nice, comprehensive study. I have no axe to grant against Solly or anyone in it. I'm just telling you, it's a mess. We rely on you for your foresight. We need smart growth. I, I want this complex, but I also want the senior complex, and I also want Gateway Commons. I know what's going on with senior, senior complex, was a gateway property. I don't know what happened with that or whether it's still on the agenda, but it's just too much, too much in that specific place. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else here tonight that would like to address the Commission? If not, I see there are two people online. Let's start with Tara Croce.
Hi, I'm Tara Crose.
Tara Crose.
Yes.
Just a dress.
Yes. And I'm on 34 Little Fox Lane. I'm, my backyard is facing the property and I have no, there's no tree lines, and I'm looking at the giant mound of dirt, along with the drones that are scared, scared my mother today that are, were at window level on my property today that my mom has pictures of, but besides the point. What I'm concerned about is, I moved here to Monroe because of the school systems, and now I'm learning about all these multiple apartment complexes happening all within the same area. And you say 18 students, but you're not sure where the students are going to land within Monroe, as in whether they're going to be in the middle school, elementary level. If the schools, if the students end up in, within the same district and they're all ending up in the same school, are they, is there plans for these students to be brought to different elementary schools? Or are these students all going to be going into the same school? Because I know we have more, multiple complexes happening and they're all in the same district. In addition, I was just looking, is, I'm hoping that they, they did look at, Solly was looking at adding more to the tree line and the fence line and the property barrier to have some actual separation between my house and the view. Because as of right now, they're continually adding more and more dirt to that mound in my backyard, and I have zero privacy because the trucks are literally looking right into my windows in my backyard. I think everybody else covered what needs to be covered about the traffic, and I just really am concerned about how that's going to affect the school systems in Monroe, which was the main reason why me and my husband moved Stratford to Monroe. And I would hate for the school systems ratings to go down because of such a large population of students entering the student body. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think next we have Alicia Garfield.
Hey, good evening. Thank you. This is Alicia Garfield of 58 Laurel Drive. I, I also had an opportunity to speak at the last meeting, and thank you for that and for tonight. I, I'm not seeing a whole lot of improvement in the information provided regarding the traffic pattern study that had said about, you know, not very many cars leaving in the morning out of, is it still 196 apartments? I missed that earlier.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah. 196 apartments, moving about 10% would be reserved for low-income housing. I just think that, that the numbers just don't add up correctly for the people that would leave for work, especially when the nation's reporting that remote work is really kind of going away and people need to come back in the office. And, and this is what I said last time. And this time too, again, similarly, students, there's laws against discriminating against people that apply to be in apartments. And I just don't see how, the assumption that each apartment would house only two people is, is going to pan out very well. I think that those numbers are very low, and I think that it, it will attract people that have families so that they can go to Monroe's wonderful schools. So we are going to see hundreds of students out of this apartment complex, you know, which, you know, if I, if I had to live in an apartment, I would want to pick a town that had good schools. But again, you can't discriminate against people because they have families. So families are going to end up in the complex. I just think the numbers seem off. They've seemed very low. I said that last time. Also, the native plants that the Conservation and the Wetlands Committee has had suggested, those numbers do need to come up. And, and I didn't see much of a change from the last meeting. So those are my comments. One more question on the map. It did show an access road on the backside of Buildings 1 and 2, which seemed to be near Judd Road. Is, is that a plan to be accessed from Little Fox or Judd? Or is that only accessed through the 120, I'm sorry, the Route 25 area? Do you know?
Access roads?
No, the only side road is in back of Dunkin' Donuts.
Right.
That's it.
So no plans to make a road from the back road? Okay, thank you very much. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garfield. Do we have anybody else that would like to comment on this application tonight? Any questions from the commissioners?
The access road does go to Judd. We answered that question accurately.
Yeah, I think Rick said there's no other roads.
There's no new road.
Just one road to Judd.
Right. Behind Dunkin' Donuts. Okay. All right. All right. Believe, this hearing going to be kept open.
Yeah, to April 6, Mr. Chairman.
So when?
April 6.
All right, yeah. So I don't know, they're not here tonight, right?
Right.
I don't see anyone from the applicant.
Hearing will be left open.
So this hearing will be left open. If you all have other questions, comments, come back at the next meeting. And the applicant should be here. All right, if there are no other questions, then we'll move on to our deliberations and determinations. First, we have a pending application, EFP 2022-03, file number 110. This is 125 Gardner Road. This is excavation and fill permit application that we've been hearing over the past several months. We have some new information.
Well, Mr. Chairman's staff has been advised through the applicant's engineer that the property owner will be submitting a petition to rezone the property back to residential. So we cannot make that a condition of approval. It's just something that was conveyed to staff.
All right, so, yeah, we have kind of all felt that it was not appropriate that, that being a residential area. So I'm happy to hear that. All right, so I think we do have the draft approval.
Yeah, I can highlight, Mr. Chairman.
Do you all want to go to that?
Do we have to, we have to sit someone for deliberation because Bruno's not here?
Bruno, come on.
Set him up. It's 7:34.
Set it off, sorry. Yeah, we can sit someone, who's up next?
Dominic Smirwino.
Dominic? You are out of deliberation. All right, so we all have the pending, the application.
You want me to highlight the relevant points, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Okay, the initial application was for the excavation of approximately 109,000 cubic yards, of which 108,000 would be exported. 1,000 cubic yards would be used on site for grading purposes. Site excavation is anticipated to last beyond the two-year period. Export truck activities would travel down Garter Road to Pepper Street and be restricted to the hours of 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. with activities occurring, occurring only during Monday through Friday. Applicant requested the following waiver. Project proposes onsite material crushing and processing otherwise not permitted. During the course of the review, the commission noted the following. Sites adjacent to Ascenic Road, there are no conservation easements on the property. Property is located with, within the West Piquanix Public Water Supply watershed. Property is not located within a flood plain. Site activity occurs within the regulated upland review area for which a wetlands permit was obtained. Commission requested and the applicant provided a blasting plan. Commission has determined the need for the applicant to provide daily records of exported materials to ensure compliance with permit. Applicant shall maintain a daily log of all exported material and provide said log quarterly to the zoning enforcement officer. Commission requested and the applicant agreed not to set up a scale house. Commission requested and the applicant agreed to reduce the excavation from 109,000 cubic yards to 81,700 cubic yards and to complete the activity within two years. So that is what we have, we have the original submission. Applicant requested it, the cubic yards be reduced to 81,700 and completed within the two-year period. And the engineering consultant is recommending $45,000.
So. All right, thank you. Well, the record showed that Commissioner Mayini has arrived, so he will be seated. As a regular commissioner of the deliberations, I would be deliberating. 125, we just started. All right, so in general, we see that we are limiting this to two years, whereas they had asked unlimited length of time. The amount of exported material from 109 to roughly 82,000. There was some question at our last meeting whether any activity, recent activity had been taking place on the site. And it looks like they have shown that there has not been any recent activity on the site as far as excavating or fill.
Ricky, you were out there?
Yes.
Blasting mats were there. The existing fill was the fill that was there for some time.
All right, so as I've said in the past, something needs to be done with this, for this property to be developed, to be marketed. This looks like the minimum amount of grading and filling that would be necessary to be able to develop property. It sounds like they may want to put in residential, I can't hold them to that as we mentioned before. Therefore, at this point, I would take a, a motion to approve before any further discussion.
I, well, you want a motion before we have any other discussion?
Motion, the second act on the.
I'll make a motion. We'll approve EFP-2022-03, file number 110 at 125 Gardner Road.
Have a motion and a second. I'll second the motion. So at this point, continue discussion. I think there are, still, I see this hesitancy. There are ways, we still can put more godrails on this application. We could perhaps decrease the amount of filler down to 80,000 of excavation. I wouldn't be opposed to limiting that further. So, I mean, we can't say no, you can't do anything with this site because something has to be done with this site. We've all seen it, it's a mess.
I think, my problem is I don't see how this isn't a quarry. And I feel like where they're coming from.
Needs to be excavated.
Does it? I mean, I drove down Garner and I looked to the right and there's streets and houses and they're up in elevation and they're, you know, there's housing there. And it's not down to the street level, it's up on, on other streets and and I understand they, they thought it might have been a good idea to say that they are considering to, to rezone this to residential. But for me now, the only thing that it seemed like they definitely wanted to do was that scale. And we approved, you know, they have, they have rock processing abilities down the road, more or less. So I don't see how this, right now, at what it is, isn't going to just be approving a quarry, which we don't allow in town. I, you know, because they came and they told us, oh, well, we're going to come to you with plans for this industrial idea. And not just that, but it'll be within the two years, like, we're gunning for this. Like, that's what we were told. And now it's, oh, well, we're going to do residential, there's no plan. They, they just want to start digging on this property, is all I'm seeing. So I, I mean, I have to be a no right now, I don't think I can approve.
So we have a regulation that says that internal drive rates can't be more than 8% grade. So at this point, the grade is way over 8% to get onto the property.
Is it?
Yes.
Really didn't look like it was.
It's over 8%, Rick?
Yeah, we had our engineer look at it.
What's it at?
You know what it is?
Yeah, it's between 8 and 10.
9?
It's the average.
So at that, at minimum, they would have to decrease.
They'd have to do a little bit, but.
Right. They want to raise it up, resulting in the grade change. You're making.
That's my only consideration.
Because it'll go to, you know.
We deny it. Well, no, because we don't have to allow a crusher there at all. We don't have to allow a crusher there on that property at all. We have to give them a waiver to allow crusher.
Correct.
So if we take the crusher away, they can't crush the rock there and the rock would have to be removed. So we don't have to allow a crusher, we have to give them a waiver to allow crusher. So I understand. Well, that would generate more trips in and out to remove. It would, well, versus crush. Probably doesn't turn out to be cost-effective to do it that way. The way I look at it, so.
I understand, it's not that far. It's not that far for them to haul it.
It's just more trips on that dirt road.
It's more trips, what I'm saying, cost-effective wise, it's, it is more, but it's probably not a ton more because they're not really far away. It's not like their plant is in Stratford or Bridgeport.
Right.
It's literally down the road. But I'm with Ryan, I don't, I think I've said this a million times about this property.
Rick, I, I mean, we know that it's basically all residential there. I understand that Kevin said that you can come in for residential houses and like to do it that way. Get rid of the industrial, turn to residential. Why wouldn't we just come in with an application to show them what you're going to do residential?
I think the commission, I think the commission during the review of this public hearing said it loud and clear. The conceptual plan for two pads doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense.
How big's the property again?
Four acres.
It is.
So hypothetically, if they wanted to come in and subdivide that property and put a couple houses, would that be?
They'd have to come for zone change.
They'd have to come for the zone change, but you're talking about the curb cut to access the property if they were to put a street in.
In transit.
Yeah, so if they were to put, instead of a driveway, if they were to put in a couple properties or a couple houses and a street to get into it, is that potential, something that could happen with the property or not? And then would it still have to have that curb cut grade requirement?
Internal driveway.
Still be in.
Road to property to the site can't be more than 8% grade, that's.
I just, I just don't think they successfully convinced me that there's any thought onto what this property is going to be besides.
Right, but that's not a requirement of excavation and fill permit. We can't require more than that in the regulations. And we can't deny because they haven't met requirements that are not under regulations.
Well, I, we can deny, we, quarries are specifically not allowed.
Right, yes.
And that, that's.
That's like I said.
You could say it's not a quarry, but looking at it.
It's a conceptual plan, but when we don't have an result, it turns, could turn into being a quarry. We've already had that happen before, that's what I said before. I said I'm not into the conceptual plans anymore. And I don't think it's even be in front of us would be a conceptual plan because we've been getting all those a lot and it doesn't seem like it ever gets developed. At least it just gets to the point, stuff is removed and it's not developed. Then we have a headache at the end that we have to deal with. You can't base your decision on this application. I'm not basing it, I'm not, I am not, I am not. I'm just, no, I'm not saying that, that's, I'm not. That would be prejudicial. I'm, that's right, and I'm not being prejudicial, I'm just saying, you've done a lot of this already. You did the one on Main Street that, that we, the guy says that he wants to open it up and then all the trees are down, property's all dug up and now people are complaining because they ain't even getting notified. It, it's like, that's the kind of thing that's coming in here now. Things are just, people are just taking, they're excavating the property, leaving it wide open. There's no trees there anymore and who knows what's going to happen. And say, well, we need to do that so that we can market the property. I don't think that this, what this commission should be doing. I think we should be looking at these plans a little bit better and not taking these things where they come in here and say, well, I want to open it up and then I can market the property better. And that, that's not what, what I think we should be doing here. We should be coming in with a plan, and a plan and an end plan that where everything is done. And we need to change the regulations because the regulations. Well, then we, we need to look at that because. Between SCP and excavation and fill, they're separate. I got all that, but I'm saying, but I'm just saying to you, it just, it gets to that point. I don't know how, we even talked to them down there, so let's talk to Rob and Bruno. Me and Ryan have the door all talked right now, so I'm not talking.
There's not enough air once you guys are done. Oh, you want us to go now?
Yes.
Anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
I kind of mirror what Ryan spoke of, I mean, I, it just, it seems and feels like a quarry. I don't like the fact that there's no end game, there's no plan for it. And furthermore, I don't think there's any way to feasibly or reasonably enforce or oversee the traffic flow set forth in the draft. You're going to have a lot more trucks on Pepper. I don't think anybody wants to see more trucks going up and down Pepper right now. And you're going to have trucks on Garter. I don't think anybody on Garter wants to see dump trucks going up and down. So I, it, I, I'm not in love with it.
Well, nor am I. However, I think duty as a commission has to go. We have to approve it, deny application based on the regulations.
Well, the, the, the planning portion of what we do up here, though, we have to take into consideration, we're trying to plan for the future. We want to worry about what's going to happen on Garter Road in the future and the homes that are on Garter Road and the type of vehicles that we want going up and down Garter Road. That's what I have in mind.
I have an idea. I, listen, obviously, this, I, I'm not in favor. And I think we should vote on that, however you guys feel, how you feel. But my, my idea is, some of the regulations won't, won't allow them to come in here and say, hey, we're putting a subdivision in and we need to require that. So they could walk in here and say, hey, I need a subdivision. But obviously, the way the property is, they don't allow for, for excavating that kind of stuff in crushers and all that kind of stuff if you're going to do a subdivision in that property. Right? So my feeling is, we need to get with the subcommittee and figure out a way that we get properties like this where somebody could come in with a plan and say, hey, this is my end game with this property, but I need to do X, Y, and Z to get to my end game. Right? So there's a lot of properties here in town that have the same situation. And Ryan's 100% correct, where you don't want to turn this into a quarry situation, right? Last one didn't get monitored very well for a long time. So, so we need to figure out as a commission with our subcommittee is how do we come into a problem property? Meaning, problem being it's impossible to build on without all this excavation to be done to it. So we should look at it, I feel, in our subcommittee, a way to do that.
Rick, the tool we use for Stevenson, is there, because they came with like that kind of broader plan.
Yeah, a comprehensive.
There's some, some use of that tool that could be used in kind of what Bruno's talking about to look at sites that way, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so, we're not talking about slamming the door on this, we're talking about readdressing it to a subcommittee.
Partly, I mean, and my other thing is, if they want, they want to excavate, but we said what they only need to get rid of one, what, two?
They're down to 80,000 cubic yards.
No, but you said for the entrance to the property, it's a 10 and it needs to be a 10. They're going way below that, though.
Well, I don't know, you know, that's, we have to rely on the engineers.
Yeah.
We'll wait for this. There comes that excavation and building, right? They come in front of us, do we have to approve that?
Uh, no, you don't. You have to state your reasons. And, Mr. Chairman, if this motion fails, I want the commissioners that are voting to make a statement to this effect. I'm going to read what you should be saying if this is going to fail.
Okay.
Because you got to get it on the record.
All right.
The commission, in considering and reviewing the application and in arriving at its decision, what you're doing tonight, shall be guided by and taken into consideration the public health, safety and general welfare and the general effect of the same on the neighborhood, the duration of the operation, future usefulness of the premises, the impact of vehicular traffic in the area and other such factors as may bear upon the armonious physical development of the town in Monroe. So if, if, if members are going to vote no, it's important that you state that before you make your motion. I mean, your decision.
Basically, so what you're saying in that regulation, that we can consider, there is no future use for the property right now.
That's a finding that you'll make.
Right, that's only a conceptual plan, so there was no future use for the property.
In your, in your opinion?
Well.
Based on the public hearing, right?
The public hearing, they said it was conceptual, so it's. The public hearing, they said it was conceptual, so it was no future use.
But remember, that's not a requirement.
It is required, but that's something that we can deny. We don't have to, right?
Yeah. Like I said, and I just spelled it out, each member that's going to vote tonight, if it's in the negative, to make that statement to that effect.
Whoa, I didn't remember all that.
Well, vehicular impact, neighborhood impact, duration of project and harmonious physical development within the town of Monroe.
Yeah, yeah, you can just, I got you.
We can also consider, like I said, decreasing the quantity of excavation that is done. If we feel like eighty thousand is too much, we can say, well, let's make it seventy thousand. Make it sixty thousand.
Sweating.
So that they do that.
Yes.
After the hearing is closed.
Yeah, your deliberation of, of what I'm saying.
So we don't have to allow a crusher.
Nope. And you can reduce the quantity.
I don't know if I want to arbitrarily just pick a number and say, oh, don't do this, do this. Like I'd rather.
We wouldn't have a number. I wouldn't know what to get it to the grade. That we're.
I think we should vote.
With an eight percent.
If the grades are reduced, they have to revise the plans. I have to review it and make a report to the commission. The grading plans change, obviously.
Do we have to vote on this tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
How long are we going to push this down the road?
Well, I'm saying, I wasn't going to push down the road. We only have a denial in front of us. You only have an approval. We should have both of those here.
Well, no, no, you, if you vote, so there was a motion.
Not going to accept it.
If you vote no, it's denied. I don't need a denial written up.
Before you make your, take your vote, you should explain.
Why you're voting.
Why you're doing it that way. Harmonious, traffic concerns, lack of, of a realistic development plan. Uh, road is scenic, you know, all those components.
Okay. We need all those reasons to deny it? We just need one, don't we?
Well.
Two, seven? We approve for one reason, we can't deny for one reason?
Now you approve.
No, I'm just kidding.
You know, inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development. I mean, that's broad based. That development shall be harmonious with the neighborhood. You have that as a general objective.
All right, well, and let's put a two or three. It doesn't sound like there's going to be any more movement either way. No, no other ideas. Correct. So modifications are, um, that we can throw in there. Right?
C.
Yes. But let me start on my right.
Condon, uh, with regard to the fact that it's a scenic road and that there doesn't seem to be a cohesive plan with the last minute change of what they're even looking to do there. I think we, they need to relook at everything and come back with, you know, maybe it is, maybe they do need to excavate, but uh, right now I don't, I don't see the need to bring the scenic road down to street level to put in a potential industrial building on a scenic dirt road that's going to have truck traffic that frankly would be dangerous and there's some sharp curves on that road. There's a lot of rollovers on that road. I could see it being a traffic safety issue. Uh, so with that, I'm going to be a no.
Okay. Commissioner.
I'm Rosie. And I, I'm, I, I believe that, um, I would want development plan. And we're going to approve excavating and fill permit. And I think that we, like, without a development plan, that if we don't develop the property, everything developed. And then it's possible on the rails. And again, and it'd be open and I, I believe that, and I'm, and on Ryan's thing, it is a scenic road. There's going to be a lot of truck traffic on that road. There is already a tremendous amount of truck traffic going down that road. This is going to add more truck traffic on a, on a scenic road. And I understand that they said they're going to try to get into Pepper, but there's no guarantee it's going to happen. And as far as a crusher, I mean, you know, it, it said you don't have to crush it. Mike said if you want to cut down on, on yards, but we didn't discuss that. I mean, we didn't get any further than that. That's where I stand.
So you're a.
A no.
Commissioner Miami, you're not going? I go last.
Oh. I just, I just assumed that we'd follow suit. I'm a no also for the, um, the inconsistency with the P O C D here. Lack of a future plan, the traffic in the scenic road that it's on.
I'm good. Okay, I'm still no.
Wesley, no. Public, uh, safety concerns citing traffic, uh, impact, uh, negative impact on the neighborhood and the project will take too long. No, uh, vision for a beneficial development for Monroe.
All right, so good. I know it's an eye on, I guess, however, the application is hereby denied. Next application. We have S E P twenty twenty-two dash two file number ten fifty-eight. This is one twenty-six Main Street. This is the, um, service station that's from the, like to put it next to Dunkin' Donuts, next to another, the next to Ryan Dutch. They did submit a revised plan that actually just brought up information. This is not going to be reflected. But it sounds like they are menial to, um, to, um, to suggest to move the pumps a little bit to make it easier for the ability truck to get in and out. Also is quite an improvement over the existing condition. This has been there for quite a few years now. So we're going to open this up to deliberation, send five numbers. I think we do have a, um, draft approval before us as well.
Yeah, when you're ready, Mr. Chairman, I'll go over the highlights.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, the proposal is to renovate the existing four thousand eight hundred and eighty square foot building for the use of a gas station, a convenience store and by approving the onsite parking and exterior building. Property contains point nine six acres and is located in the east of the side of Main Street within the B two district and the M D D overlay. Commission noted the following during the hearing. Frontage and access is from Main Street. Site is not located within five hundred feet of municipal boundary. Site is not located in a public watershed. There's no conservation easement. Site does contain wetlands, water course and the associated one hundred, one hundred foot upland review areas inland wetlands. Commission approve all regulated activities. Applicant will be removing the existing pavement area located to the rear portion of the property. A favorable review by the Monroe Architectural Review Board was received. Site is served by public water and onsite septic disposal system. The commission requested the widening of Main Street Route twenty-five to allow for a bypass lane for cars traveling south on Route twenty-four and the applicant agreed. Applicant has received an approval for the Connecticut Department of Transportation District Three for improvements within the state right of way. Health department has approved a new subsurface septic system. Applicant has provided the construction of a six foot wide concrete sidewalk along the entire frontage consistent with the sidewalk policy. Commission requested and the applicant agreed to install decorative bowlers in front of the sidewalk areas and the pumps. The applicant has indicated that the upper and lower floor areas will be used for storage purposes only. And the commission requested and the applicant agreed to reposition the pump islands from the perpendicular to the parallel position to Route twenty-five to improve overall safety and circulation. Uh, commission, uh, has determined that this is consistent with the P O C D. Exterior lighting is dark sky compliant. The site served by public water and subsurface sanitary system, which was approved. Uh, compliant off-street parking, including ADA compliant spaces, loading space and electric vehicle charging stations provided. And a motion and a second is in order, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Chair, I intend a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve S E P twenty twenty-three zero two, file number one six five zero. On twenty-sixth.
Need a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, so, uh, we'll continue discussion. Commissioner Bosu, what do you think about the new position of the pumps?
Oh, my safety concerns are better now with this because traffic is going to flow one way. The only other concerns I have is like I, I addressed to you about, and I looked at this, that we have to put bowlers on these pumps. Cause what's coming off of twenty-five, the end ones aren't going to prevent anybody from taking those pumps over. So I don't know if you can put some kind of design here because it's not in here. And so I don't know, how do we know that this plan is going to come into effect?
Oh, uh, the chairman will not, I, I, staff will show you, so you'll see revised plans like this one for the pumps before the chairman signs off.
So we'll see those before the chairman signs off. So you're going to bring a set of plans, are you going to add the bowlers in there?
Yeah.
The other question, and how about along where the.
And decorative bowlers.
Decor, that's fine, as long as it covers those pumps from somebody coming off twenty-five.
And the sidewalks too, because Commissioner Wesley requested that.
And then, um.
Yeah, they're not on this plan.
Right.
On the, on the drainage system there, the, it's got, what do you call it? It has, um, what kind of system does it have?
Spillwater drainage.
Hydrodynamic separator.
This is, yeah, subsurface.
Is it oil separators?
Separators, yeah, that's all.
And gallons can they hold?
I don't know that.
You get that information or can we find out that plan? Because this is right near the Quonic River and that, that's something that I didn't think about when we were here. And I think that's something that's a big concern if there's a spill there. How much can they contain?
I know currently right now there's like nothing, right? Protecting this property, like I know they're doing a lot to.
You know, with the MS four requirement by the state of Connecticut and inland wetlands, all these issues are being addressed now. And they're removing the asphalt in the rear. It serves no purpose.
They're pulling back a lot. Yeah, they're pulling back a lot from the.
That was already dug back there already.
Yes.
It was added there. That's tip coming all out of there.
Yep.
Cause it was a violation for that, right?
Yes, it was.
And that's been addressed already or not really? Or it's going to be.
It's going to be, yeah.
So put it in the rest there?
That's over.
Yeah, wetlands, I think.
So when our engineering looked at this, he didn't have any concerns about spillage or anything here and what we can retain on this property?
No, because normally that's incorporated. I just don't have that answer.
You don't have that answer.
That's, that's, that's a norm.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's all I have for now is I just wanted, you're going to give us a new plan then before Mike signs off on it? Then we'll look at it and then Mike can sign off.
How many gallons can it?
But as long as Mike, we see it, then Mike can sign off, right? Is that what we're going to do?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I just want to say, I think the, the opportunity here to, to widen twenty-five a little bit, I think is also a great, um, great benefit for cleaning up this property because right now it is an eyesore. So.
Eyesore.
Commissioner Miami.
I'm good.
Commissioner Wesley.
I'm good. It's, it's met all my requirements. It's, um, would have been easier if we had, had this completed for tonight. So we don't have to keep dealing with this week after week.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because I mean, but I didn't know that they were going to. Last time we asked, Ryan asked that at the meeting, if they would turn the pumps and he didn't want to turn the pumps. And that's why I had their concerns about the way the pumps were, when it was laying one, somebody's going to have to back forth, back forth, this and that. Now they decided that it's better to turn the pumps and this is a better movement.
And it's also consistent with other, other, other stations that were recently approved.
Right. And so I'm saying, there's a flow. That's true. And it's right.
No?
No.
No. Global, not like this.
Global, global gas is facing the other one. Thirty-six.
No.
Monroe Turnpike across from Big Y. If you look at their curb cuts.
Yeah.
About a hundred and forty feet.
Is that when I had COVID?
End to, end to end. Well, no, end to end. I mean, I didn't look at that.
Right.
Hold me on the exact sizes, but they're very, very consistent with these. This, because this lot is so deep, it appears very narrow. But when you look at a shallower lot, it's all of a sudden not so narrow.
Yeah, but the thing is, is but the one, the one down there only has.
Two pumps.
Two pumps.
Right.
Doesn't have three, so this.
But they still have to refuel. They still have to bring.
No, I got all that, yeah. But, but where their pumps are, the truck is not going anywhere near where those pumps are. The truck.
That's what's real.
But the way this is designed now, it's better than it was before. You hear me? Because then you, this truck is not going to cross over into like lane one. And then like they're saying, well, it's only going to be a fueling at night, but who can guarantee that it's going to happen? I, we could never guarantee that.
We got a letter.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean it's going to happen. I mean, it's so.
It was, it was.
Do you have any other?
So we can still vote on this, right?
Yeah, we can vote. In fact, let's go ahead. Starting on my right.
Uh, Condon, yes.
And Brooks, yes, with the changes.
Miami, no.
Wesley, yes.
Ohio, yes.
There you go.
There's motion passes with changes, modifications. All right. We are third patient, patient title. This is S E P twenty twenty-two dash oh four, file number one six five two eight, seven oh seven Main Street. Change of use, um, and S E P for conversion of existing space of worship. Conversion of existing space to worship church use. Do you have the, um? I think we have a.
Yeah, we have the draft resolution. I can read the highlights.
Go ahead.
Okay, the place of worship will occupy approximately two thousand nine hundred and forty square feet of the existing nine thousand eight hundred square foot building located at seven oh seven Main Street. A total of forty spaces will be designated for the church use. The balance of the parking spaces will be used for future tenants or the remainder of the floor space. Property contains two point three acres. Commission noted the following during the public hearing. Frontage and access is from Main Street using the existing driveway. Site is not located within five hundred feet of the municipal boundary. Site is served by private well and onsite septic. Health department has approved the new use with the existing septic system. Applicated, applicant indicated the church will not use the existing kitchen facility. Applicated, applicant indicated that the remaining unused floor area will be occupied in the future by a commercial use and subject to change of use application. And a motion is in order, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Chair, I intend a motion to approve this change of use.
I'll make a motion to approve S E P twenty twenty-three zero four, file number one six five two A, seven oh seven Main Street.
All right, I have motion on you the second.
Second.
Motion the second. Is there any further discussion?
I mean, I mean, I know there was concern about traffic, um, but when everything was explained, the current use or way this building is being utilized was on Sundays and it was more people. This is now on Sundays and less people, so it's going to be less traffic than if it were to stay the same. It's going to be less traffic than if this were to go back to its prior use and be a full restaurant again. I think it's great that we're going to be, you know, welcoming a new faith to our community. So I'm a yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Miami.
Yes.
Any discussion? Discussions?
Yeah.
I, you know, I share, I share traffic concerns, unsure of the future use of the commercial space. We do have a letter here with some public discontent and pushback and a long, permanent loss of tax revenue.
You have a discussion?
Yeah, I think that when this came in front of us, that we should have required a traffic study, because a traffic study is different for a church than it is for a restaurant. And I had big concerns about that, because I would have rather had a traffic study so that, like these people are saying like 25 cars an hour, which I know that at churches, they all get let out at the same time. And so, right now, they're only doing 40 spaces, but, and the other thing is, that, my concern was that, he was telling me that he has to have a physical address to get a 501C, and I don't see that.
That's not what he said.
Yeah, he did. I asked him that question, I asked him if he had a status, and he said no.
Until the local jurisdiction makes a decision.
Is that 501C status, or church, or religious status? I think you looked up the wrong thing.
I think so.
501C.
He didn't say anything about a 501.
501C is just nonprofit. Church status is different than a 501.
The status is, you have to have a physical address?
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's not the.
No, I know, I tried to look it up, and, and.
Yeah, but you, you said 501C. 501C and church are two different. Yeah.
No, I know, but I thought that it really, so it's not, it's not, the church status is different?
I don't know.
Yeah, no, than a five, yeah, because, like, I believe the Rotary Club is a 501C, it's a, 501C is just a nonprofit.
Correct.
Which does not necessarily get property tax exempt, it's the, it's a church.
I, I tried to look it up when I looked up, and I didn't see anything about having a physical address.
Yeah.
Yes, all right, so that's why.
All right, then, uh, let's go to a vote.
Starting on my left. Westland, no.
Mainy, yes. O'Reilly, oh, wait.
An old wait?
I'm gonna last.
Why you always last?
It's the rules. What do you mean it's me? We're going in one.
I would know.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. So, uh, motion passes, the application is approved, 3 to 2. Moving on, we have, uh, a new application coming, SCP 2023-05. Can I just give us a heads up on that one?
Yes, this is for, uh, this is in the building that Boarshead sent, we approved the church in there, this is another tenant, and this is for, uh, special, uh.
Boarshead?
Special events.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Boarshead. Uh, this is for special events like weddings, uh, uh, birthday parties, et cetera.
Weddings? At Boarshead? I'm confused.
No, this is the Boarshead building, but they're not coming. Boarshead's.
They're there, right? Boarshead's there? Are they there yet?
They're doing, they're still working on it.
They're still working.
This is the main level, when you drive in, the church is there.
All right, uh, do we have the minutes from 11923 under other business? Do you see the minutes? All right, number L table, the minutes, and for next meeting, zoning and planning matters.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can you just acknowledge that the entire P&amp;Z Commission attended the class?
Yes, we did.
That, that contained four hours?
Yes.
Four hours? More than four hours?
Made a minimum of four hours.
I only had to listen for four hours? Why didn't you tell me? I put in 10. Even when I hung up, I just stayed on, just to get nervous.
One of the lawyers on there did say that we were only satisfying one of the half hours of an hour requirement, so do we still have to do another half hour?
Absolutely not.
All right.
Actually, 10 hours.
He made that very clear, he said this is only a half hour before the lousing, you still need to do another.
Because it was segmented, that was a lot.
Okay, he didn't realize that.
Right.
Okay.
That was a lot.
And the commission does not have to do it for two years.
Any further comments?
You know, so you just need to direct staff to prepare a letter, there's more to this, by the way, the, the state statute. Chairman has to direct staff to write a letter to the town council that the commission fulfilled the four hours.
Four hours?
All right, minimum of four hours.
Say it was eight hours, please.
You're kidding me?
Tell them to write a letter, Mike.
I want all eight.
So we should be good for four years then?
All right, so I'll, I'll prepare that letter.
Can we get double credit if we stuck around the whole thing?
They're gonna give you a sticker.
I want a sticker.
I want a shark.
It's gonna be interesting how the state enforces that.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, they don't give you any kind of certificate, so then how would the state?
The town council has to receive a communication from this commission that you fulfilled it. And we'll, we'll probably send it to the office of policy management. And ZBA has to do the same thing.
They were on, I at least saw Mr. Wayne on.
Yeah, thank you. And last, I'd not leave a show.
Oh, no, we're first.
I know, I'm sorry, my eyes are, are they still? I want to, my eyes were dilated, that's why I'm wearing sunglasses.
I just thought you were too cool.
Not a jerk, but.
I don't know why.
Everyone's gonna wear sunglasses.
I made the, I'm here.
Charles, Charles, yours.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna keep it short, um, this was on the last monthly report that I presented at Three Oaks Road. Um, I left it on because, just for consistency, but not much has happened, um, they have cleaned up some more on site, but the cars are still there, some of the old sheds that are falling down are still there. Trying to find a way to help him and give him some ideas, so that's where I am with that, see if other questions. Um, 236 Roosevelt Drive was Lakeside Liquors, and there was the sign. Um, I worked it out with the state DOT to make sure that the sign that he was proposing was not on the DOT right away, so that's been resolved issue. Um, and I told him with setbacks exactly what he needs to do, so he's revising his plan to comply as far as what's on the sign itself. So that's where we are with that. Um, 216 Old Newtown Road, it's a new one, um, it's a residential property that had commercial vehicles and construction material on the, uh, side of it, and we issued a notice of violation, and I went out today, and they removed all the vehicles and most of the material, so it's moving along. Uh, legal issues for the SPCA property, um, it's going into foreclosure, uh, May 6th, and, um, we've had some interests in the office, people coming in to find out what they can do with it, it's a residential zone, see what happens, so.
Do you have any specific, uh, issues to things you for us that you need help in working out, or?
I'm going, talking to legal counsel about a lot of things. Um, yes, and I will, I really want to come to your next, uh, subcommittee meeting, talk about zoning amendment changes, definitions, and, uh, you know, and especially the excavation and fill permit, I think that would be something that should go on the subcommittee meeting too.
And the construction equipment, right?
Absolutely, so there's a bunch of things, so looking forward to that.
All right, I think we're gonna be deciding that next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want a date for the next?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, March 27th, Monday, 5:30.
Let me check my calendar. Who, what we got going on?
March 27?
My text.
That's a Monday.
5:30, right?
5:30.
I have a feeling something's going on. Oh, I'm free. Let's do it, 5:30, I'll be here. Monday?
27th.
27th, 5:30.
Business, business, Chair, I intend a motion to adjourn.
That sounds good. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Excuse me, excuse me. Uh, yes, um, I, I was under the understanding that a complaint that I had filed would be discussed at this point in the meeting concerning 216 Cutler's Farm Road. And I would have an opportunity to speak.
216 Cutler's Farm?
Oh, we don't generally address complaints.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay, so that was, so 216 Cutler's Farm, right, so that was, I'm sorry, that was my mistake, so that was supposed to be on the agenda, that's a property that has, um, commercial vehicles on it, and, um, there's a complaint regarding fill coming onto the property, um, I'm still, uh, discussing some of that with legal counsel, so, I, I kind of came out, come off my mind to put it on the agenda, but yes, so this is, um, a neighbor behind the property of 216 Cutler's Farm Road.
Yeah, there's a foremost.
There is a complaint on it.
Like, is it being brought onto that property?
No, it was brought on in the past, yeah.
Oh, it has been brought on?
It was brought on the property in the past, it was, um, going, it was an open file that, um, that, uh, Joe Chapman had been, had gotten some information on, and, um, it has, it does have commercial vehicles on the property, so I want to issue a, a notice of violation to them for that, but there's the component of the fill that I'm discussing with legal counsel right now to try to figure out, because it was brought on previously, the property is now stabilized, and we're trying to figure out how to handle that. Yeah, the course of action, so I'm, I'm talking actively with legal counsel, so this is the neighbor, um, that lives behind that property. So, so first, sorry, I forgot to put on the staff report. Hi.
Is your wetlands on that property?
No.
So what was the fill what?
It's, it's right near the, um, it's right near the senior center.
It's across the senior center, pretty much.
You know that road with?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, you come out of that road, it's right there.
So that's the property the violation's on?
The property is on, is on Cutler's Farm Road, and, and he lives, um, down the driveway behind it.
Yeah, interior lot.
Okay.
Correct.
I would have, I'd be happy to address the commission and explain if given the opportunity tonight.
Oh, great, it's not for us to do that, right? We can do it during public participation.
Yeah, that, you'll have to have it back during public participation period for that.
I, I was told I would have an opportunity tonight.
Tell them that show.
At the chairman's discretion.
At the chairman's discretion, whether you'd like to.
I'll let him tie.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Uh, just name an address.
Glenn Snyder, 210 Cutler's Farm Road. I've lived there since March of 1997 with my wife, and I've raised five children there, I'm sorry I can't be in person, I'm in Tennessee, um, helping my elderly parents. Our property is a backlot, so the driveway of our property is along the southern border, uh, the southern property line of 216 Cutler's Farm Road. And the side of our front yard and backyard is along the eastern property line of 216 Cutler's Farm Road. We, we've always had good relationships with the neighbors, including Mrs. Pendagast, who lives at 208 Cutler's Farm Road across our driveway. After the tenant, it's a tenant at 216, started bringing in truckloads of fill to level his backyard, everything changed. I have emails going back to January of 2021. After the town notified the tenant, he needed to remove a non-setback compliant propane tank, which he installed without a permit, on a cement pad that he put up on the driveway property line. I had asked then for help addressing the filling that had previously occurred on the property. I was advised then that Joe Chapman would be visiting the property and would advise me of what course of action would be taken. That never occurred, so that's the reason we're here today. Um, our property is very unique, we enjoy being outside, but the tenants' actions have certainly taken a, a lot of that enjoyment away. The, the tenant began bringing trucks triaxle full of fill and dumping it as early as seven in the morning, often on weekends. And the, the banging of a tailgate of a triaxle is, is extremely loud, and, um, it woke, it woke us up, it woke our neighbor up, Mrs. Pendagast, she ended up calling the police at least once because of the construction noise. He had mini excavators and Bobcats, again, used early in the morning, and I think you all are familiar, when you back up with one of those, you get that, that safety feature, that's a, a very annoying beeping, um, at seven in the morning. So she had to call the Monroe Police because of the noise, and they had asked him to stop doing that. When he was leveling the yard, at one point, a rock rolled down to the property line. The tenant said, "Don't worry, Glenn, I'll take care of everything, it's gonna look really nice." And you know what, I have to admit it, you look at that property from the outside, and if you're standing in the middle of the yard of that property, it probably does look very nice. But when he leveled the backyard, he created an erodible slope right up to the property line without any silt fencing. He told me, "I've brought it 800 yards, and it's not enough." He leveled this property like taller than I am from the property line.
So my back.
The slope has been left to grow wild for years. It's a complete mess from the back corner of our yard to the front, to the southeast corner of the property. Some of the weeds on that slope include poke weed, I don't know if you're familiar with that, it gets those little, like, blueberries, it can get 10 feet tall, 5 feet wide, it's poisonous, it's toxic to dogs, we have dogs, all registered with the town. The taproots run very deep, it's very difficult to kill, it takes over the fence, I have hundreds of little weeds coming up every year on my property that I have to kill, I've had to take a chainsaw to the plant just to cut it down when it falls over the fence. He never, my understanding is he never applied for a permit, which, which means likely the, the requirements in section 6.4 excavation and filling in the town of Monroe, planning and zoning, were likely not complied with. There was a rainstorm when he was doing this, and right away, that sandy fill eroded into my yard, a good, probably 2, 3, 4 feet into my yard, I had to ask him to clean it up. And I previously said, "There's no silt fence, there's nothing there, there's nothing to contain it, it's gonna keep happening." He put a silt fence and hay bales on my, on our side of the property to stop it. The hay bales that he left on the driveway side were never removed. Eventually, they, they eroded and came down the driveway, I had to remove pieces of them. Anytime there's a rainstorm, we have standing water on our front walkway, we'd never had that before, you can trace that by looking at the erosion in the driveway to that side driveway slope which he created. There's also recent construction on the, on the property that's gonna make that situation worse. I had a survey conducted by Lewis Associates in Monroe, and that slope that he created is actually encroaching on our property on the driveway. In the complaint, I noted that I went in front of the Town of Monroe Board of Assessment Appeals, and I showed them pictures of the property, some of the same pictures that I attached to the complaint. They reduced my assessed value by 15% because of the blight, and it says that right on their sheet. So this doesn't just impact me, because Monroe lost tax revenue because of it.
Well, thank you for that information. I believe, uh, Cheryl, the new zoning enforcement officer is, uh, going to be able to handle this for you.
My understanding is, she has been out there, and she has seen the commercial equipment that he parks.
Yes.
Okay.
Including box trucks and a cherry picker, a boat that hasn't moved for years, that's literally the outboard motor is on my property. It's a mess, it's, it's embarrassing.
Sounds like.
I just want to say one, one last thing, if you would, please. I, I've been to a couple of the planning and zoning meetings where I've heard officials say they don't want to, or they, they can't always police some of the property owners that come in front of the P&amp;Z Commission. I feel the same way, I don't want to police this, you know, I don't want to be the one to have to do this, but I don't know where it ends. He's even spray painted a line on my driveway that he said his construction crews can, can He's even spray painted a line on my driveway that he said his construction crews can, can go up to that line. He, he shows blatant disregard for planning and zoning regulations. And apparently he's in the construction industry because he's had a sign in front of his house for years and it's lit up at night for years. He's lied. He's taken advantage of me, my family, the neighbors, including Mrs. Pendigast, the town of Monroe. So until he or the owner of that property is held accountable, I don't know what else to do. So I filed a complaint. I do trust Cheryl to get these issues addressed, and I know some of them aren't easy. But I shouldn't, I live in a residential area, not a commercial zone. And it's been really frustrating to have to deal with this over the years. So I, I, I very much appreciate that you gave me the opportunity to talk here. And, um, I, I hope and I trust that, that Cheryl will, will move some of these things forward.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right, so we, uh, have a motion, June, and a second. Motion was.
Hi.
Hi. Anonymous, we are hereby adjourned.